Talk about kind of one of the jewels in the community of IHC, Brandon and Emilio. We appreciate having you here. And this is just, this is your show. So we're going to turn the time over to you. Maybe Gordon will try to ask a few questions. He and I'll try to keep each other in line.
I've got a list of questions here to push you on.
Good, good.
And so we will go from there. But thank you so much for coming to see us today. We really appreciate it.
Great. Well, thank you. Yeah, good afternoon. Thanks for inviting us to be here today. I'm Brandon McBride. I'm the CEO and administrator at Logan Regional Hospital. And I'll let Emilio introduce himself as well.
Yeah, I am the marketing communications manager at Logan Regional Hospital.
So first of all, we just want to say thanks for the opportunity to be here. We really do appreciate the partnership and relationship that we have with the Cache County Council. And we feel your support, and we very much appreciate that. And hopefully, you feel our support back to the community and to you as a county council. So our intent in being here today is to just spend a few minutes with you, giving kind of a summarized overview of what was presented to Barbara Tidwell and to Kathleen Howell and Carl, I believe, was there this last spring, when we report on our tax exempt status for 2021. So want to talk a little bit about that, give a little overview of some things that are happening at Logan Regional Hospital. And really, this is just an opportunity to connect with you, be in front of you, see what questions you have for us, either locally with Intermountain Healthcare, or even at a system level, if you have any questions on anything that might be happening from that perspective. So we'll dive into this. And Emilio, please jump in as you have items to add as well.
Absolutely.
So our mission statement, this is really important to us as an organization, helping people live the healthiest lives possible is our mission. And it's important to us because it's bigger than just hospital care. We really are trying to focus on how can we help keep patients, community members, healthy in the community. And yes, when they need hospital care, they can come to Logan Regional Hospital for their care. But we really want to get upstream and focus on population health and keep people well in the community.
Just to kind of elaborate, continue off what Brandon said, I really like what he said. You know, we're going upstream. We're really trying to focus on whole health, the whole body, you know, rather than one specific component. We're really focused on, you know, the entire body, the entire well-being.
Perfect. As you know, we're not-for-profit organizations. So, you know, our goal is to meet the healthcare needs of the community, focusing on ensuring that we can meet the diverse healthcare needs, do that by providing excellent care and at the lowest appropriate cost, regardless of patients' ability to pay. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Just a little overview on Logan Regional Hospital. We are 146 licensed beds. We operate about 132 of those beds right now, a little over 1,100 employees, 37 different medical specialties, and a whole host of surgical specialties. The Gosner Cancer Center is a huge part of what we provide to the community, and we've grown that significantly over the last several years. We are a Level III trauma center, and actually are a very, very busy Level III trauma center. We're probably the busiest Level III trauma center in the state of Utah. In fact, when the state comes and surveys us every three years, they always tell us, you're almost on the cusp of being as large as some of the Level II trauma facilities, which would be like a McCady Hospital, or a Utah Valley Hospital, as far as our trauma volumes. We're a stroke receiving center, and also a STEMI-receiving center. STEMI is essentially a clinical term for, for a heart attack. And so we have a full interventional cardiology program that can care for those under full cardiac arrest. Some of our highlights from this last year, just to give you a sense for the volume we deliver, just under 2,100 babies. It's interesting, though, we've seen that number drop every year since 2008, 2009. And really, it's around family planning and birth rate declines. We are seeing just under 7,800 surgeries, about 6,500 acute inpatient admissions. So that's an individual that's actually admitted to the hospital as an inpatient. And then again, a very busy emergency department with almost 27,000 emergency department visits in the year.
Do you, do you project those babies delivered, it's going to keep declining? Do you kind of look at that? Or is it just, you're kind of prepared for whatever comes?
We, so we have the capacity in our facility to grow. In fact, we built the women's center back in 2007, 2008, with 34 mom-baby rooms in it. So with the ability to grow volumes, which at the time were about 2,600. So yes, we have capacity to grow. We keep thinking with the population growing, and maybe some family planning changing, that we'll see that number increase. And it's just continued to drop little by little, you know, 40 to 50 deliveries, year over year, for the last 10 years or so.
Okay.
So yeah, I guess the short answer is, we don't know exactly what the projections are going to look like, but we do have the capacity if needed.
Okay.
Yeah. So just an overview on what it means to be a not-for-profit hospital. Again, I think you're aware of this, but the real focus is around community dividends. And we have community-based priorities in place. We have no obligation to shareholders. Our obligation is back to the community. And then in addition to that, we can offer that support back to the community. We'll talk a little bit more in a few minutes about the support we provide to the community through community benefit. But medical education, we've recently implemented our tuition reimbursement plan for our caregivers. And we also offer some scholarships to BTEC and Utah State for their nursing students as well. But we've got a great tuition reimbursement plan for our caregivers now that allows them to reimburse up to $5,200 a year for medical education. And then that bottom statistic there is more of an Intermountain-wide figure, more than 1,000 healthcare studies are open and actively underway around medical outcomes and research. So this is a really important part of our mission, is to be able to provide service to all, to admit and treat every race, every religion, gender, person, every time, and to be consistent in doing that. And our physicians and caregivers will always base their clinical judgment on what's best for the patient, and not around costs. I'll give you an example of this. We, we have seen this year, it's been really interesting. I've never seen it as much this year, or prior to this year as we are this year, dementia patients showing up in our ER who are very violent. And there is no place, really, in the state of Utah that will take a violent dementia patient right now. So we had a patient in our ER for 11 days, two weeks ago, that we were just trying to find placement for. We had another one come on Friday that's been in there since Friday. We're working with Sunshine Terrace and some local, you know, memory care facilities to try to get them placed. But because of their violent approach, some of these care centers are not willing to take them. So we try to do what's best for the patient by either keeping them in the ER, or putting them on our medical unit. But that's, you know, that's completely unreimbursed and unfunded. But we want to try to do what's best for the patient, to get them in, in the best setting. And we had two patients earlier this year with autism. And autism is not a diagnosis that a psychiatrist treats, and an inpatient behavioral health setting. We ended up housing both of these patients in our behavioral health setting, one for two months, and the other for 45 days, until we could get placement for them in a facility down in Spanish Fork. I share those just as we're seeing the behavioral health needs in the aging population. And there aren't great care sites in place for some of those types of patients. And so we try to do what's best for the patient, regardless of whether we're going to get reimbursed or not.
Brandon, have other IHC facilities seen an uptick in, in the violent?
Yes. Yeah, in fact, so this is consistent across Intermountain Hospitals, but our number one injury for our employees over the last few years has been needle sticks, until this year, and it's caregiver injuries around workplace violence, with either intentionally or unintentional patients who either with dementia or other issues that aren't trying to injure our caregivers, but they just do because of the nature of what they're dealing with. So we are seeing more and more behavioral health-related issues, and more injuries to our caregivers because of it. So it's a, it's a concerning trend.
A known cause?
Nothing other than kind of what we're all seeing, I think, in, in our communities these days, with things just, feels like there's just a higher, higher level of stress and anxiety that people are experiencing. And I think it's carrying over to their health. But yeah, no, no known, kind of, we can put our finger on it for sure type cause that I'm aware of. Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is the number that we presented to Barbara and Kathleen and Carl in April, when we presented on our annual gift to the community. So a couple of things I want to highlight here, charity cases, we had over 9,000 charity cases in 2021. Two things specifically around that value-adjusted charity care number. And Gordy, you actually asked this question last year, which was a great question. I'll clarify it again this year and just, and just highlight it. Value-adjusted means that is a, a net number, not a gross number. So we adjust that number down to match what we would have been paid by an insurance company, not what the gross charge would have been for a patient. So know that that number's adjusted down. And two, the charity care portion of that is pure charity care. It's not bad debt. It's a pure charity.
The question I asked last year, are you just taking all the ones you can't collect on and labeling it charity care? You said no.
No. Yep, this is a pure financial assistance charity care. Yep. And our, our tax obligation, had we been taxable on our property tax, would have been about 2.4 million. And so, you know, we have an obligation, of course, every year to demonstrate that we're meeting that tax-exempt status through the value-adjusted charity care that we're providing to the community. Any questions on that number? A few other things that I'll just share with you, some additional gifts to the community. This is specific to our local community, 176,000 in community service and education, about 122,000 in serving underserved populations. A lot of that comes through Midtown Clinic. We, we provide them with free rent, essentially, so they can provide service to the community, health profession, education, and also volunteer services. So those are kind of general buckets. I realize if you want more detail on that, I've got an actual breakdown of all of those, if you wanted to see more detail of what those details look like in that, in those buckets. And then just so you're aware, this, Gordy, kind of highlights that bad debt number. So just so you can see, that 7.3 million, it's kind of just coincidental that those numbers ended up being close to each other in 2021.
Makes you think you're stacking the debt, Brian, just the way they're so close.
Yeah, exactly. I wondered if you had asked that question.
[laughing]
So bad debt was about 7.3 million, and that was not included in our total gift to the community. And then the $17 million figure is total capital improvements that Intermountain Healthcare has committed to Logan Regional Hospital through ongoing capital, through building improvements in 2021.
And you've got a huge project going right now.
We have a huge project going on right now. It's a $136 million project that has escalated significantly because of construction costs. The, the direct construction alone on that project is close to 100 million. And we initially started that project at a budget of 65 million on direct construction. So it's a, it's a four-story building that will replace our two, in fact, let me, I'll go back to it really quick. It'll make a little bit more sense. You see kind of the hospital here, those two front towers, see my mouse there a little bit, these two buildings here. We're going to, we're going to tear these two buildings down. And we're building right now a new building that's on the backside of the hospital, adjacent to the ER. And it's a four-story building. The first floor will be brand-new kitchen, cafeteria, education center, some outpatient services. And then the second and third levels are all inpatient services. And then the fourth level's more kind of business, open office-type space. But then when we tear these two towers down, we'll build a nice new entrance to the building here. For those of you that have been to the hospital, our main entrance is really bad. Most people don't even know where it's at. And so we're actually going to address that as well in this project, and have a really clearly identified new main entrance to the hospital. So that project is underway right now. We'll actually start moving into the new building in the spring of '24. It's about a year and a half. And it'll take another year to demo those two front buildings and build the new entrance. And then the last thing we wanted to just highlight for you is our community health aims. And I think you all know, every three years, we participate in what's called a community health needs assessment. These are our aims for this year and next. But we are updating these based on the community health needs assessment that we're completing this year. And then we'll have a new community health needs plan for the next three years. We're actually meeting on Monday with Jordan Mathis and the, the Bearwood Health Department to work through that needs assessment, and then set priorities for the next three years. These have been our priorities leading through the last couple of years through 2022. What we are seeing so far this year, though, in our most recent assessment, is that mental well-being will be our top priority again, moving forward. And then again, we'll, we'll continue to focus on some of these other things, but really a focus on, on mental health and continuing to provide those resources and support to the community.
What is the Mental Health America ranking?
So I wish I had a little bit more detail, but it's a, essentially, it's a assessment that's done across the country around how are communities best equipped to meet the mental health needs of their, of their community. And so it's community resources, it's support, and how well are we doing at that. There's a focus on how do we improve our ranking in that area, so that we can, again, make sure we're, we're meeting the mental health needs of the community. I don't have a lot more detail than that, but I can, let me do a little homework on that, and I can send that to you, Gina.
I'd appreciate that. That's very interesting. Is that a, do you know, and maybe you don't, but is that a private organization that does that ranking, or who does the ranking, really?
I don't know. I think it's probably an independent organization that does that. But I, I can get more information on that. Are you aware of that?
No.
Okay. We'll, we'll get more information on that, Gina, and I'll, I'll send it out to this group.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So that's, that's what we have for you today. Just, again, wanted to come and give you a little update on what we'd shared with, with Barbara and Carl in the spring, connect with you, talk a little bit about some things that we're doing at the hospital. And then really, you know, take some time to just see what questions you have for us.
Big question for you. As you know, I'll always ask a hard question. Two months ago, I heard on the radio that the hospital in Logan Regional was awarded one of the top 20 caregivers in the nation. Could you tell us a little bit about that award, and exactly what, what it took to achieve that high ranking?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Be my hardest question.
I was gonna say, that's a softball, Gordy. So thank you. I appreciate that. So I'll highlight two, actually. So we were awarded a 100-top hospital. And in the community hospital category, we are the most awarded hospital in that category. And so we've received it 11 times in the last 12 years. Really what it is, it's a, it used to be IBM Watson. They've now turned it over to Meritiv Health. But they do a very, very comprehensive analysis on all hospital outcome data, safety, quality, patient experience, cost. And then they have this massive formula that they use to derive who are the top hospitals in the United States. And again, this year, we were a top 100 hospital. And that's top 100 of all of them. There's four categories. There's academic centers, there's large hospitals, there's community hospitals, and there are rural hospitals. And we fall in that community hospital category. And I think there were about 20 on the list. And you look down that list, and it shows all the hospitals, and the number of times they've received the award were by far the most on that list. So we're, we're proud of that. And it's really our focus on safety and quality that we think is helping to drive that. Another award that we recently received is Visient. And Visient's another company, independent company, but they're very tied to Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. And they do kind of a similar study, looking at safety, quality, experience, access, outcomes. And we ranked at the 93rd percentile in the country for large community hospitals. And so, yeah, proud of those accomplishments. And really, it's a, it's a tribute to our great physicians and nurses and, and caregivers at the hospital that are really committed to our patients and to the community. So we're proud of that. So thanks for asking that.
Congratulations.
Just to add on to that, one of my favorite things about the Meritiv Award, that it's not like a pay-to-play type of award. So that completely eliminates any unbiases. So it's completely, you're not paying any money. It's just straightforward. And so I really appreciate the honesty and the transparency that that award not only provides, but the recognition behind it as well. Because it really, it really means something, knowing that it's, it's just straight honest feedback. It's not pay-to-play. It's, and it remains unbiased.
Very well.
I've got three questions.
Okay.
The first one, you know, you talk about you're not beholden to stockholders. You don't have to worry about providing any kind of return to stockholders. But will you describe the ownership structure of, well, not just hospital, I mean, IHC, the corporation owns the hospital, obviously, but
Right, right.
The IHC ownership, who owns IHC?
Well, ultimately, I mean, it's the community, right? We have a CEO, and the CEO then reports to a board. So Governor Levitt is now the new board chair.
Yeah, but that's not ownership.
Well, there, there really is no owner. There, there are no owners that, that receive, if you're getting at who, at the end of the day, who receives financial benefit, per se, for any excess of revenues over expenses? No one does. It goes back into the company. So that oversight happens through a governing board. And the governing board hires a CEO and executives, and then they manage and own that, own the organization. And then, of course, they have local boards that don't have fiduciary responsibility, but have people like me that run the local hospitals. But there is no, there is no owner of Intermountain Healthcare. It, I know it almost sounds a little odd, but it really is the community.
Okay. All right. Second question is, I have a couple of friends, one who went out and had a, it's a day-long physical wellness kind of procedure at the Mayo Clinic.
Hmm.
And then another friend who came and learned that Logan Regional Hospital does the same thing, and, but it's fairly new.
Hmm.
Can you describe that a little bit? I mean, his experience, he had been to Mayo Clinic before. And his experience here, he said that it was just as thorough, he felt, and as comprehensive and accurate as what his prior experience had been with the Mayo.
Well, that's great to hear. Thank you for sharing that. Do you remember what specialty it was by chance? Did he say, was it cancer, cardiology, or?
Well, no, I, I think it was just a general wellness check.
Okay, gotcha.
And it, but it took all day. It took seven hours.
Hmm. Well, I guess at a high level, one, again, that's great to hear. So thanks for sharing that. Two, yeah, I don't know how to maybe address that specifically without knowing what specific kind of service he had done. But that is a focus of ours, is to provide that wellness. So many of our, let me give an example, maybe this will tie back to your, tie back to your, your comment. We are moving a lot of our arrangements with insurance companies to value-based arrangements rather than fee-for-service. So rather than a insurance company paying us for kind of every episode, they essentially say, hey, here's a per-member-per-month amount. You need, now need to proactively manage the health of our member and/or your patient. And so it could have been one of those arrangements where the insurance company was saying, you know, we need you to be proactively caring for these patients and focusing on health and wellness. And we've, we have a number of those arrangements now. In fact, about, about half, we're almost up to 50% of our insurance contracts are what are called value-based arrangements rather than fee-for-service. So I'm guessing that your friend probably had an insurance company that's partnered with Intermountain and said, please proactively manage the health of our member, your patient. And because of that, they had that thorough wellness evaluation.
I don't, he, he said they, they went through all of the, you know, various scans and lab work, and treadmill
Yeah.
Checks for cardiology and whatever else, and
Yeah, that's great to hear. Thank you for sharing that.
And so I wondered if that's a new program, because he said that apparently it wasn't offered before, and that's why he went to the Mayo.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would have to probably know a little bit more detail of what one he went through, because it probably was just offered, I'm assuming, through his family practice or internal medicine physician, and through, again, the preventative care plan that he has with his insurance company.
So there isn't a specific program, then, that's?
There, there are, there are specific programs, but there are some variation in the different programs that we offer. So it really depends on, again, the partnership with the insurance company, and which plan he's on. And then, but overall, the, the intent is, how you've just described it, is for them to go through a wellness exam and visit, and then proactively address any issues that, that they have. And that's mostly managed on an outpatient basis in our clinic setting.
Okay. Then the third question I had, it's, it's always puzzled me. But I'm old enough to be on Medicare, and I know that when I go in for any procedures or anything, that the Medicare has contracts in place for how much they'll pay, and what they'll do, and the amount they'll allow to be charged. And I know insurance companies do similar things when they, they contract and determine what they will pay. And you accept that, of course. So my question, though, relates to, what if somebody comes in, they don't have insurance, they're not on Medicare?
Mm-hmm.
Their, their rates must be much higher than what the contracted and negotiated rates are for Medicare or insurance companies. And is that, is that an accurate assumption?
So the bill charge will be the same for every patient, regardless of what insurance company they have. So if you're a Medicare patient, yes, Medicare's only going to pay, you know, bill charges might be $500. Medicare says we, we pay 200 on that. What we do, though, is for uninsured patients, the uninsured automatically gets a 25% discount. And then if they pay upfront, we give another 15% on top of that. So a 40% discount on bill charges, which is actually better than, a lot better than what commercial discounts would be, and pretty much matches where what we would likely get paid for Medicare and Medicaid.
So basically, nobody pays the full bill charge amount?
Nope. Nobody pays, nobody pays full bill charges. Yep. And one of the things we do too, through our, so we offer financial assistance to everybody that comes through that might be in that situation. And oftentimes, we can qualify them for Medicaid as well, if they are uninsured and meet some of those criteria. We can get them qualified for Medicaid also. And so yes, nobody, to answer your question in a short answer, nobody pays the full bill charges. And again, those discounts are pretty substantial for uninsured patients.
Thank you.
Well, I'm happy to hear that, because next time I come in, I know I can get almost a 50% discount.
There you go.
Yeah. Well, you're
I'm trying to work my way into that bad debt category. I get 100% discount.
When you, when you, when you go back to college, you might qualify.
Well, I mean, I know you're kidding, but if a patient presents and says, hey, I'm uninsured, and I'm willing to pay upfront, it's a 40% discount. Yep.
I'm going to cancel my charge.
Yeah. Well, I've actually, sorry, I know we're probably out of time, but I'll just mention, there are some insurance companies, some of these ministry health plans that have been a little tricky for us to manage. And I've actually had conversations with patients where I've said, I think, when you present again, just tell us you're uninsured, and that you're ready to pay for services upfront. And it's actually, like I said, a better discount than even some of these health ministries that are popping up.
Sounds better all the time.
I think everybody's had, I just have one question, and it came up this, this last week. I was talking to a, a friend of mine that's actually a, a traveling nurse.
Yeah.
At a hospital in the region, pretty new one, pretty nice one. And I was shocked at the percentage of traveling nurses that they had on staff, to where it was the significant majority. How are we doing in our local community with, with, with skilled nursing and things like that?
Yeah. So great question. We are in a much, much better spot than most hospitals, in a much better spot than we were a year and a half ago. So in 2020 and into 2021, we didn't have a lot, but we probably had three or four travelers per nursing unit. So we probably had 15 to 20 in that range, which is, you know, we have 350 nurses at the hospital. So it was a relatively small percentage. We now, I think, just have one, maybe two, in our transitional care unit, because they went through some staffing challenges and some sickness. And so we do have a traveler still in one of our nursing units. But we've essentially eliminated all travelers at our hospital. And Intermountain Healthcare has actually created its own, it's called IFLEX program, where we have our own internal where we have our own internal in-house traveling program. So if you have a nurse that says, hey, I'm willing to travel, I'll take a cut on benefits, but I'll get a little bit extra pay to go travel. Intermountain is now kind of staffing that within our own company. And that's been a great benefit for some of our nurses that want to do that and it's lowered our costs significantly. This is the, so healthcare-wide, nationwide, the worst financial year in 47 years. And primarily because volumes have dropped a little bit with things slowing down a little. And expenses are still really high with a lot of it because of traveling nurses. So we've been fortunate here, we haven't had that massive expense and we've maintained relatively kind of normal business volumes that we aren't necessarily seeing that here locally. But across the country, it's a huge issue.
Oh man, I think that hospital would kill to be where you were at a couple of years ago. They couldn't even fathom where you're at today.
Yeah, we're, we're fortunate.
Fantastic. Well, Emilio, Brandon, thank you so much for, for coming and giving us this presentation. Like I said at, at the start, it's, we're so fortunate as a community on so many levels and the hospital is definitely one of them. So thank you very, very much. And with that, I'm not even going to pull this out, we're just going to adjourn. Call it good.